Hey Jamie, Peter. Um, we got another minute here. Um, are you doing the local recording?
I am and uh, BCTV may be recording, given that I have seven o'clock.
Yeah, okay. I haven't heard the message yet, but I just wanted to make sure we were still doing things locally.
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have a form. I do believe we have um, one more commissioner joining us, but if you wanted to get started.
Yeah, I think I'll get started here. Good evening. My name is Peter Basserman and I am chairman of Branford Inland Wetland Commission. I will now open the commission's regular monthly meeting of September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. It is now seven o'clock. This evening's meeting will be conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software conference platform. It's being held in accordance with Connecticut Public Act twenty-two dash three and the inland wetlands and watercourses regulations of the town of Branford. Documents referenced during the meeting are available at the town hall or on the agency's webpage. The file agenda for tonight's meeting was filed September third and is posted on the town's website. Any changes from staff regarding tonight's agenda?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, no changes. But I will note that item four B was with, we did get a withdrawal. Um, that has been withdrawn and I will be suggesting that we table and continue items four C and five A, but we'll go into that when we get to those items.
Okay. Cranberry Community Television will be recording and broadcasting tonight's meeting. Thankful for their efforts uh, to provide service to the community at large. And for those speaking at this evening's proceeding, please be conscious so that you position your camera so that your face is visible on the recording. Also to ensure a complete and accurate record uh, for discussion, for the discussion this evening, each time a statement eh, or comment is made during the meeting, speaking party must announce his or her name before articulating any comment. This applies to any party wishing to participate. Those wishing to speak may use the raise your hand feature to indicate such a desire. Uh, also, once the meeting has begun, please mute the microphone when you're not speaking. Uh, through the roll call at this point, Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski present, and I'd also like to state for the record that I did review the the um, the tape from September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five of the regular meeting that I was not able to be in attendance.
Thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan, Commissioner Boda, name changed. I think I heard present. Commissioner Begamon?
Commissioner Begamon, present, and I was not present at nine eleven meeting, but I have reviewed the tape in the minutes and for the record, I'm prepared to discuss items from that meeting.
Okay, we have a quorum for this evening. All commissioners are seated and are able to vote. Is there any commissioner on any of the agenda items this evening that need to recuse themselves? Uh, and welcome Commissioner Sotomayor. Please indicate your presence by indicating present. You're muted, sir. Commissioner Sotomayor, welcome. Please indicate your presence by saying present. And we got a technical issue, I think.
Hey, I'm I'm sorry. I'm late. I can hear you now, Peter. Sorry about that.
No problem. All right. We have five commissioners and therefore all are seated and able to vote. We have the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, September eleventh. Anyone want to make a motion to approve those minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, regular meeting of the commission of September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a second?
Commissioner Goklowski, since I reviewed the tape, I've stated on record that um, I I will uh, second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion, further comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Commissioner Boda abstained.
Okay.
Does my sound okay?
First up is an application. Somebody speaking?
Sorry.
First up is an application for review, Branford uh, inland wetland twenty-five oh eight oh one, twenty-five Blackstone Avenue Mirror Lake, the vegetation removal and aquatic pesticide permit. We had a discussion about this previously. I think we were looking for some additional information. Jamie, you want to take that away?
Sure, Jamie Frederick and then wetland agent. So at the last meeting, the commission determined that anything that fell under a deep aquatic pesticide permit application was not within their purview. Um, and there was some invasive species removal, namely knotweed, that the commission determined was as of right. However, we're looking at the native brush removal, tree removal, cattail removal, and whether or not those fall within the scope of a permit. Um, so we did receive a marked up GIS map today, kind of showing those location, the location of those activities and some additional information. Um, and some photos. I have not really had a time to fully review it yet. Um, but we do have the applicant here and he can probably walk us through it pretty quickly. Um, would you like for me to screen share the GIS map to help facilitate that review?
Yeah, it'd be great.
All right. Is everyone seeing that?
Yes. I'll have to get zoom in, Jamie. Maybe it might be easier to read it.
Want to start on the north side or south side?
Uh, let's start with the uh, reeds and cattails, I guess. That's the easiest. Well, uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, there's a section of uh, cattails, which I've included a couple of photos of. We can go to the photos in a minute, I guess. Um, and I apologize, but I'm limited on my resources. I don't have a lot of graphics uh, programs here, but the the uh, outline in the uh, native green is the um, the cattail area that we discussed last time. There's some additional photos of that. Um, we're just going to trim it for now. The um, town's um, vendor uh, won't be applying any herbicide to that, so we'll apply herbicide in the spring, which is well within the scope of its uh, the the application that we filed with the DEEP if it's approved and also within the manufacturer's recommendations. Um, there's, yeah, it's the last couple. There you go. That's one of them. So this is all from the the yard and then I believe it's um, it might be number somewhere around eight or somewhere in there. I think there's one also from the, from Pine Orchard Road. Near the beginning. Maybe even earlier there, I guess.
Looks like it jumps from seven to eleven. I only have twenty-three. Oh, here we go.
So that's from Pine Orchard Road, so that's viewing it from the, from the roadside, if you step into the underbrush there. Um, so we would trim that down to the waterline, um, remove all the debris and then treat it with an herbicide in the spring and see how we do. You can also saw that that yellow flower in the water is considered a nuisance as well, but we won't be treating that um, until we get more information through the um, uh, um, agricultural extension. And then I guess, is, are there any questions on the cattails?
Yeah. Commissioner Goklowski here, um, Mr. Hulse.
Yes, how are you?
I, good. How are you? Um, is this going to be an ongoing situation that you're going to have to be cutting back these, is this going to be on a regular basis?
If we just cut them back? Um, yes, it'll be, you know, uh, yearly as a, you know, be ongoing maintenance issue most likely. Um, if we treat them successfully, then uh, according to the literature, um, you'll get some reemergence possibly um, that you'll trim back and then treat again, but that uh, typically, once you treat them uh, once or twice, you end the, that difficulty. But there's also knotweed in there also, which is uh, considered invasive as well. It's webbed through it. And when I was there today, I actually walked down into it and you can see there's also um, where it's drier, the um, Virginia creeper or, you know, mile a minute and that stuff is getting in there too. So that's just going to continue to populate.
Okay. Uh, this is, this is Commissioner Boda. Um, what, why are you removing cattail?
Oh, it's going to continue to grow and it's gonna, it builds land and we're trying to preserve the water course and the, the park. Uh, and it continues, as it continues to grow, it'll block the view and uh, eventually it'll take over the entire shoreline of the pond.
Yeah. Um, so this is, this is for aesthetic purposes? I mean, so that, that, the cattails are, are native species and they provide, they provide function. Um, they actually do quite a, quite a bit of um, environmental services, so um, and, and all, all ponds like this certainly fill in over time. They turn into um, marshes, emergent marshes. It's a, that's a natural progression. Um, so yeah, I'm just, I, I guess I'm a little unclear. The, the, the goal is to keep this a what kind of pond?
Well, uh, it's a lake. It's aesthetic. It's a, a part of a park that we have adjoining it. Um, I don't think that we want it to eventually become a meadow. And in this area specifically, there's um, there's already a buffer uh, with the lawn and then she also has a, um, there's also some other uh, whatever you want to call it, weeds and low, low lying brush that will prevent uh, that us actoring is filtering already. So um, yes, the cattails do provide some habitat. But uh, and filtering, but I don't think in uh, this application, it's, they're doing that much. There's plenty of other shoreline with uh, nooks and crannies and we have the whole other side that's got low, low, uh, on the left side of the uh, map. It's got low lying brush and overhanging trees and all kinds of wildlife support.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, the GIS map I have here doesn't show the drainage, but the pond is part of the drainage network in the area as well, so it does convey stormwater.
You can see in one of the other photos in series one through seven, that this entire lower southern end of the pond has become um, a muck land. Um, so this is, on the left of that is the spillway where the water enters and you can see in probably three or two maybe, I don't have the photos in front of me, I apologize. Or later in the series, to the right, you can see that it's all converted, that whole area is already converting somewhat to meadow. Um, and we'd like to preserve it as a, a lake. At least that's the, the neighbors and the the more local population that does, you know, go there by occasionally. And the more it fills in, the less, the more problems we're going to have with algae and et cetera, and we're not going to support the fish population.
This is Commissioner Basserman. Question on the um, herbicide. You, you're going to be cutting um, in the fall, I assume, on the uh, on the cattails?
Yes, sir, permitted.
And then the herbicide, does it have a, a preferred water, water temperature, temperature to be effective? Is that why we're waiting until the spring or?
We're waiting on the spring to be up to get a DE, DEEP permit and the rec department and the first selectman's office um, has asked us to use that vendor that the town uses for all the other ponds and they, the according to Dale Izzo, um, there was no plan to treat this eh, when I received her email at least. I, I'm sure we might be able to add it to the schedule. But obviously there's a trip charge, so waiting till the spring uh, should not have that much um, more impact on it. As far as the temperature uh, went, it was, I don't believe the water temperature is the limiting. Um, but most of those are forty to, you know, eighty-five degrees applicable.
Yep, got it.
And then if we give you-
Recording in progress.
Was there any more questions on the cattail area or do you want me to move along or I don't, I don't want to keep you forever?
Keep going.
All right, Jamie, can you bring it with that? So then uh, the yellow portion is uh, just overgrown with poison ivy, uh, knotweed, um, creeper, um, mile a minute, uh, wild, um, thorn bushes, um, um, uh, burning bush uh, and tons of poison ivy. There's also the red circles are all dead trees that would get removed at some point as part of this or on the public work schedule. Um, the living trees would be preserved. Those trees would be taken down to uh, stump height and then left for habitat or whatever. Um, and that's um, that, you saw that area in those first seven photos. And then um, on the left is uh, just a disaster where the spillway and stuff is, so that's um, upward, any picture after, I believe, twenty-one? So there's the dead trees. We just skipped through. So twenty is the um, I guess it's, it's later than I thought. All right. So the, if we start with that picture there, that's the park portion of the um, the grassy portion of the park and public works has planted a couple of trees you can see to the right. And then to the left, um, where you see that clump of um, you'll see a dead tree all the way to the left of the photo. And then the next tree over is struggling, but will be left. And then to the left of that tree, there's another dead tree. And then to the right of the living tree um, is the spillway and then there's also a concrete area that would get um, exposed and possibly get a bench uh, for people to sit and watch the pond that's existing infrastructure. And then this is all poison ivy, knotweed, mile a minute, um, wild raspberry, sumac. Um, and other crap, for lack of a better word. It's very overgrown, wild grape. And there is room to provide a, like a three to six foot buffer, even with removal of this, of lower brush and grasses um, at the pond edge. Except where the spillway is in this, in the concrete wall.
So this blue area is where you'd be looking to, this blue area and the yellow area is where you'd be looking to manage?
That's correct.
Native nuisance is kind of the, the, the way you're framing it, vegetation?
It's invasive, but we would also manage some natives also to try and give some vistas. So that people, right now you can't see the water um, except over Mrs. Spindler's lawn at two seventy-eight.
So are you looking to clear right up to the water's edge or kind of cut down to like a lower?
Lower hat, lower uh, brush. So that you can see over it at least, cut it down to three or three feet or so probably. Depending on what's there. If it's invasive, we're going to remove it down to the stump. But everything will be able to regenerate, so then we can manage it better and trim it rather than total uh, removal. It's just been neglected since COVID, to be honest. Between direct department, myself as a volunteer and the, and the public works, it's really been neglected for a while.
And the other- Can I just, I have a, I have a question. This is Commissioner Boda. Can you just go back to where, where water is, you said that this is um, the water is coming from this, the street into the system?
Uh, the water comes, uh, the, the inlet is pretty much around those two trees that are circled around the two red circles in the bottom left. Um, and then straight to the left of that, there's a twenty-four inch, I think, um, it might be twelve inch, whatever, uh, concrete culvert that goes to a storm drain, which is on um, Blackstone Avenue, which is at the far left of that photo. Uh, or the map rather. And then that, so there's two storm drains there that tie in. There's a storm drain on the corner on Pine Orchard Road that ties in. And then this goes up to um, Anchorage Farm Road, which is further up and there's a few, uh, quite a few storm drains on that street that drain into this as well. And then it drains out at the other end where the white line is at the top of the map to um, to another small pond and then a small creek and another small pond and then into Long Island Sound.
And, and again, this is Commissioner Boda, so the, the concern, the concern is these emergent, um, the emergent vegetation. The, that's the goal is to remove some of this and the thought is that um, you don't want it to become a um, shrubby marsh. I'm, I'm just wondering about, so the, the removal of some of that emergent vegetation. Um, one of the functions that it provides is, is nutrient uptake. Um, and you talked a little bit about algae earlier and um, I'm also just noticing these what look like grass, grass lawns that are abutting this um, water body. And I, I can't help but wonder how the, the removal of those emergent plants that are, that do a really good job at taking up um, nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus, which is what folks are putting on their lawns. Um, if then that doesn't actually make the algae problem that you are referring to worse as there's, there's nothing but the algae to uptake those nutrients.
I don't know if I, I apologize. It, I don't think, first of all, the, I wouldn't know, I don't know if they'd be called emergent because they've been there for four or five years, but-
So emergent just is the kind of vegetation as they're partially in the water and they, it's a, it's a, so um, if I can just ask, um, what's your, your area? I'm sorry, you, you work, you represent the town, you're a volunteer?
Yes, I'm the Youngstown Park Commission. I run the, I chairman of the commission.
Okay. And do you, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up a little bit.
I have no professional education in wetlands management other than reading a bunch of books and literature from the DEEP.
Okay. Has, has anybody um, who, like, who's worked on this plan considered that kind of, that the ecological impact to the, because, so our, our, our regulatory requirement is to think about short and long term impacts to wetlands and watercourses. And the, the, the proposing of, of removing certain vegetation that's providing a very specific function um, that will then have a a, a negative impact particularly on water chemistry and um, on, on things like dissolved oxygen, the, the nutrients that are in the system, which then leads to things like algal blooms and um, I'm just wondering if anybody who does have a background in this has looked at this plan and, and evaluated it.
Um, the last time there was actually um, any type of formal evaluation was uh, two thousand eleven by the um, extension service and in the last thirteen years. Um, hold on a second. I'll give you the picture number. Um, if I can find my phone. The uh, entire uh, end of the pond has filled in with silt and debris and that's another project that needs to be tackled, but um, well, let's see, can you see it from here? So if you look at uh, photo twenty-two, the next photo. Um, all this stuff that's got yellow in it, there's about a six foot buffer now of silt and very marshy clay-y um, soil in this entire region. In some areas, it's almost twelve feet deep. That's slowly encroaching into the lake. Um, you could see um, there's a patch of green to the right of the second two um, where there's a small trough and that's where the inlet is, is, has still carved a path through. Um, and both of the homeowners have told me, you know, of course, we're not testing them or anything, but that they're doing composting and other tech- that they're doing composting and other techniques in order to limit, um, nitrogen roll-off and using, uh, slower release, uh, slower release fertilizers in their gardens and beds and stuff, so theoretically that's not it. But this watercourse is getting fed all the way up from, uh, Sunset Hill and Birch Road, um, and other areas, so it's coming through, um, there's a drainage ditch on the back of Birch Road along the railroad tracks that feeds in, so it's getting a lot of water from Pine Orchard, um, and Birch Road and Pine Orchard Road. So I think that's where a lot of the silt is, if you know that area, you know there's been a lot of construction in that area in the last five, five years or so. Um, as far as nitrogen filtering goes, I don't know if the brush on the land is doing that much uptake. I'm sure the plants in the water are, that's probably why they're thriving, all these, uh, yellow flowers, I didn't take the time to identify them, I know they're considered semi uh, native, and, but they're also very aggressive in their growth and infill, but that whole area is now almost like a floating platform of silt and debris that's been taken up and eventually we, eventually we hope to pick up some of that at least to preserve what we can of the watercourse.
Uh, um, okay, uh, so.
We understand you're trying to, trying to do both, we're trying to do both things, but, um, Chet's Pond was super overgrown and we did clear it around it so that people could enjoy it. And I think the people in this area would like to be able to enjoy the pond instead of looking at a bunch of overgrown, invasives and poison ivy.
Yeah, so, so this is Commissioner Boda, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I certainly understand peop, the, the, the desire, I think from, uh, speaking for myself, from a regulatory standpoint, our role is to, to ensure that, um, work that is done in around wetland and watercourses does not have a negative impact on that water body, whatever, whatever it is, the wetland or, or watercourse. Um, and I, you know, I have expertise, I'm not an expert. You, you've, you know, you've said your, your background and it, there's a lot of, I think, or maybe, or could be, and, um, for us, that's a very difficult, that is not a good place for, from which we can make a determination, I cannot make a determination. Um, and so I would be really interested in knowing a little bit more about the short and long-term impacts of your plan with regard to the water body itself. So that would require an expert.
Well, we don't have any money, so, I don't have a budget, the Parks Department doesn't have any money for this, so, uh, I'm kind of, we were gonna do this as volunteers. Um, we just went, I just watched the last meeting, Young's Pond, we're, uh, Supply Pond, we're gonna let them clear a path along the edge, so people can enjoy the water and the trail. Um, we're seeking to do something similar so people can at least enjoy a portion of the, the, looking over the water. Um, as far as native vegetation, if you want me to preserve anything that's there as much as we can, um, we can commit to doing that. But I think removing the poison ivy and the, uh, other invasives, like the wild grape, we can cut that back somewhat, it's very aggressive. Um, to at least give a view or two onto the pond, uh, I think that would be, you know, somewhat acceptable, I don't know how to determine those limits though.
Yeah. This, this is Commissioner Go-Claude, Mr. Holtz, you stated in the last meeting, if I remember correctly, that you weren't removing the cattails, you were just trimming them down, is that correct?
Uh, we would trim them down to the waterline.
Yes, so you weren't removing?
Well, we weren't gonna remove the roots or anything because that's much more invasive, but we were gonna treat it with an herbicide. So I guess there's different parts of the project, there's, you know, if you wanted to call it phases, there's phase one, then there's area two and area three. Area two is the area right along the roadway, and then area three is the area around the spillway, I guess.
But I, I, I think the point Commissioner Boda was trying to make that you were, or, or maybe I misunderstood it, that you were looking to remove, um, the cattails.
Yeah, so this is, this is Commissioner Boda, I think, I think that.
Cutting them down to the waterline.
Yeah, I think, um, to, Mr. Holtz, your, your, your concern, I think, I, you know, also live in town, also a volunteer, um, and so, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I think that there are parts of your plan that are feasible, I think that there's also, it may be that there are other folks in town who can offer some expertise. The, the, you know, folks, whether it's the land trust or there's, there's quite a lot of people that have, um, a background that can address some of these questions and, and maybe it's kind of looking back at, I think there's a difference between trimming back cattails temporarily and then doing, um, intentional herbicide to, um, to, to kill them back, or I'm, I'm just, you know, and, and certainly the removal of invasives is, is great, I mean, that's always something that is, is helpful, I think I, I, where my concern comes in is when you have these natives that are performing an important function to keeping this water body, because I, I, like I said, I, I can tell you that they, they are taking up nutrients that are making their way into that water body as well as any of the like dog poop and goose poop that's around. Um, those cattails are providing an important function and without plants like that doing that, it, it, the, the only place for those nutrients to go is algae and then algae covers the surface and then the algae dies off and then all the oxygen gets consumed and the critters that are living in that water body can't breathe and, and we end up with die-offs and that's never good. So there's just a little cascade of things that, that can happen, so I, I think that there are parts of your plan which are, which are great, I think the thing that certainly caught my attention is the removal of, um, of cattails, um, so. But I'm just one person.
The problem I have with the removal of the invasives on the spillway side and along the roadway is, um, picture I took seventy-five decks of cards and I shuffled them all together and then I threw them on the floor and I asked you to just pick up the red ones. It's very difficult when you're ripping out, wild vines and sumac and other garbage, for lack of a better word, to not damage the other foliage, for lack of a better word. So if I'm ripping out tons of knotweed and poison ivy and it's wrapped around another tree or a plant, you know, we, we do the best we can to save what we have, but sometimes in previous roles, it's been easier to kind of cut everything back. And then in the spring, kind of sort it out and then cut back the, the really invasive stuff uh, again and again until it, or pull it up by its roots or, you know, however you want to manage it, but, within reason. But I, I know that I don't want to see this or Young's or any of the other ponds or lakes in town become meadows, despite the fact that, you know, that's the eventual thing when we're all not here anymore. But, uh, the algae blooms in this pond are horrendous already when we're having, uh, heavy rainfall, so we can't really control the people up, uphill. Um, I'm sure the foliage and the plant life is doing some removal, but I don't think it's being very successful. I was down there today and we just treated the pond with, uh, algicide on the ninth, I don't know which, what the technique they used was, but you can see, this is today's picture, you can see in, in a week's ti, two weeks' time that, that it's already growing, so that was not a successful application in my book. And in another photo that I have, I don't think I sent it to you, um, especially around the spillway in the area where theoretically they would have treated it the most. Um, it was very thick and, and soupy, we're also looking, as you may recall, to do other techniques as well, which include, you know, carp and possibly aeration and other stuff to help control the algae as well. Um, but we'd like to preserve it as a lake, not as a swamp, which then becomes another problem with mosquitoes and everything else.
Commissioner Baseman, I guess, but, given the discussion that we've had, you know, we, we have a risk here of, of undoing a function that exists now without any evidence on the record that says, um, that, that's not of concern. Um, and I, I have a difficult time without some additional information regarding that, uh, of just using aesthetics, um, as the reason for, um, what the plan right now indicates. Uh, because we've got certainly other situations in town who could be very similar. And again, without any kind of assessment by, uh, somebody qualified to make that assessment, uh, it's difficult for this commission, given its regulations, I think, to just say, yeah, that's, uh, probably a good idea, I, I, I think there's additional evidence that's gonna be needed.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, so I'm gonna try and take us a step back real quick and kind of look at the application as it remains. The, the, the concerns are, um, native vegetation removal along the bank of the watercourse essentially, um, and some, some trees, not necessarily so much on the bank, but, uh, you know, next to the, to the watercourse, and then the other concern is the cattails removal of vegetation in, in the watercourse. Um, I do want to speak briefly to the comment about the Supply Ponds, there certainly are some parallels, um, but I think one thing to keep in mind is that the trail over at Supply Ponds is running along a road, the reason for installing it was safety. Um, it did mention that when vegetation's removed, we usually look to see to have vegetation replaced, um, and the challenges associated with that at the Supply Pond site. So with that in mind, I'm just gonna throw out some considerations for the commission to consider, discuss, um, reflect on. I do think that it does make sense to manage the vegetation near the inlet, if for no other reason for routine inspection, um, and to make sure that it's properly functioning, it also does provide an opportunity to create a, a point to view the pond from the, the park area, um. I've been by the site, I didn't really look at the trees that are dead or dying, but there certainly are some trees in at, at best poor shape. Um, I would certainly be in support of keeping the stumps in place to ensure there's no ground disturbance. Uh, I think one question I would have is if you're looking to remove, is it like five mature trees? I, you mentioned that Public Works has planted, one, two, three, four, five. Um, looked like they'd planted a tree or two over here, um, and.
And there's three, uh, mature trees on the, there's three mature trees, uh, or fairly mature trees on the Blackstone Avenue side, and then at the property line, we have an entire forest all the way up to the side of the pond.
So I would, I would suggest to the commission that you would want to see some mature trees install, replaced, if you're, cause it looks like a mature tree was removed from two seventy-eight Pine Orchard Road at some point in the recent past. And that was shortly after that removal appears to be when the cattail started growing. So if you remove the mature trees on this side, you're probably gonna start seeing cattails growing over here, cause it's gonna become a very similar environment to what is on to the, the eastern side of the pond, so.
Shadow, there was a tree down by the red box on, uh, at the corner of the red box, that, so there might be a shadow from that, I'm not sure.
There used to be a tree there.
Oh, weird, okay. I don't remember.
Um, this is two thousand twenty-five, um, or maybe not. Yeah, there is a mature tree right here that has been removed.
Oh, was that two thousand thirteen? Wow.
Two thousand eight.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I mean, the introduction of sediment from that inlet and the increased sunlight probably both played a factor in the establishment of some of this vegetation on the southern end of the watercourse. But I do think that that is something to consider if you're looking to remove mature trees. We don't want to pull back all of the shade canopy from the watercourse, we want to make sure that we're replacing it, um. So I think that kind of provides a little bit more food for thought for commissioners, um. I certainly understand the, the, the concern about the removal of the cattails, I did mention to the applicant that I thought that might be a point the commission would be concerned with, um, I am not an expert, I'm not botanist. I don't know if these are native cattails or if there, there's a broadleaf cattail which is considered native and a narrowleaf cattail which is not, I don't know which one it is, um. Uh, they are, um, so, and it's possible the commission might be okay with some activities and, and not others, um, but I think if we can provide some more guidance for what you're looking for for the various activities, that would be helpful. And maybe the applicant decides to break it up and, you know, get what the commission's comfortable with now and reserve the rest of the project for another time, or, you know, we table it and come back to it once additional information can be submitted. Also, it's my understanding that there's currently a deep aquatic pesticide applica, or permit for managing, um, vegetation uh, in the pond, but that that does not include the cattails and that the new application submitted to DEEP recently extends to the cattails, so we don't know if DEEP is gonna give permission to treat the cattails yet or not either.
This is Commissioner Baseman, Jamie, would they identify the, uh, species of cattail in the response to the permit request?
I don't know that DEEP does site visits as part of their review process.
They can, only, they only do it when there's a complaint.
This is Commissioner Begamon, Mr. Holtz, I, I feel for you because you are trying to educate yourself and do the best thing for this pond and for the park. And with the project of this scope with carp and with herbicides and with potential dredging in the future, et cetera, the commission, in my experience, always has an expert, environmental expert, to support the plan. And as Mr. Baseman and Mr. Bo, Ms. Boda said, it's, it's really hard, other than, it's really hard to approve anything other than the removal of invasives by hand without disturbing soil, so. I guess we're, where we are. The carp, a question about the carp, what were they supposed to eat?
They eat the, uh, a lot of the phylmitaceous, um, weeds and, and surface algae. They only are certain types, they're very particular evidently, but, um, that was, uh, the plan for that was if we got approved by DEEP was to drop twenty-four in there and then in the spring to see if they were making any headway. But then I guess if the algae's not taking up the nitrogen, that, that, you know, I mean, i- i- as you know, it's all interlocking, so if we, if we put the fish in and they eat the algae, then, you know, is there any more algae to, you know, obviously the, the DEEP regulations would allow up to sixty for this pond, so we're well within the limit of, at twenty-four, but I, I'm concerned about the nitrogen upstream, I mean, I, 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 we dropped the mailing in two thousand fifteen or sixteen is, is part of the Pine Orchard Association campaign to try and get people to, you know, uh, not fertilize their lawns with nitrogen-rich fertilizers and to use slow release instead of fast release and get rid of liquid fertilizer and, I, I don't know if we were somewhat successful or not, but it's probably time to do that again, but it certainly does have huge blooms after, uh, big rain. And I don't think the bloom right now is from this rain, it might be from the rain we had whatever, four days ago or whatever rain, I forgot, maybe Saturday did rain. But the, the, our hope was to at least get some of this stuff under control. And then continue to look for better ways to do it and solutions. And yes, get a consultant involved with, but, you know, all that stuff has to wait till next year. Um, and then, you know, to really get a true consultant in there, uh, I was told it's gonna cost between three and five thousand dollars for your lake and between five and twelve thousand dollars to get somebody to come in and just do a, a general study and recommend a basic plan. And that's not even with project management or anything, you know, more comprehensive. They do offer a somewhat inexpensive um, study on the water quality and some of the plant life and stuff through the uh, co-op uh, or the Ag Service, which we're scheduling for the spring. Um, so, you know, maybe some of this discussion needs to wait to spring, but we at least like to get the spillway open area open and stuff so we can see it. I haven't seen it in four or five years. It could be crumbling. Uh, I don't know. It's concrete and, and, you know, field stone. Um. So we did like, at least like to get to see that and possibly the wall next to it so that we can evaluate that for repointing or any other stuff it has. So maybe if we could get approval to go six feet in either direction and remove most of the invasives and some of the native stuff. Um, and then open another vista, for lack of a better word, kind of above the gap between the twos so that people could see into the park. Maybe that's a good temporary solution. So then we can evaluate what we have. Um, and what we need to do further.
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wintland Agent, one question. You said something about a wall adjacent to. Um, is it, is the wall above the bank or is it like a?
It's probably filled in now. It's probably filled in in front of it with all this stuff, but you can see it's to the right. Um, at, if you look at the two and then you go over on my screen, it's like two inches. There's a gap where the channel is for, yeah, right near your mouse. Yep, that's the channel where the spillway uh, water, the inlet, rather, I shouldn't call it the spillway. The inlet water is coming in right now. Um, the inlet's elevated about a foot and a half, so it does get a little bit of rolling uh, momentum. And then to the right of that, um, in one of the photos, you can see in through the bushes. Um, it's probably around photo nine or something like that. You can see that the concrete wall and there was a structure there that, that held a bench at one time back. At least I was told it held a bench. Um. It should have been in s- around eight or nine.
Looks like I didn't get photo nine.
I took too many pictures.
Or eight.
Um. Let's see, can you see this one fifteen? Uh, you can just see it in fifteen.
What you're talking about?
Yeah, yep, yep. So the spillway is to the right of that. Um, so I, I think at one time, maybe the spillway was bigger or they had a gate in there or something. Um, and then the spillway was rebuilt by Public Works to the right of it a little bit when they put the new culvert in. Um, but there's a concrete elevated area there and then there's all that infill in front of it. So we, we like to put a bench so people can sit there and, and, you know, watch the wildlife, for lack of a better word. That's the beginning. That goes to the, that thing goes to the north about eight feet and there's a concrete platform there. I don't know, maybe we used to have a lease or something back in the day. I don't, I don't really know.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Given your, given your emphasis on the spillway, would you be willing to come back to our next meeting, which I think is in two weeks? With a plan for the spillway, you mentioned two things. One, clearing a six-foot uh, parcel and then something about a vista above. Um, I guess if we were to look at a spillway plan as the fall plan and then you can get the necessary resources uh, for the rest of it at some later date. Does that sound like something that would work for you, given the fact that you'd like to do something sooner rather than later?
I, I'm amenable to that. I'd like to get, I'd like to get the dead trees on the public works schedule. Um, if I could. And then as far as the spillway goes, I'd like to at least have clearance to do some exploratory cutback because I can't even see it right now to, to take pictures of it and show you it. And show you the area. You can see how dense all that foliage is. There's maybe when the leaves fall a little bit more, I, I could, but. I mean, if I can at least remove some of the vines and stuff right on the spillway. Maybe a, you know, four-foot wide path and I could show you that area and we can expand it from there.
Are, are, are you saying, yeah, you'll come back in two weeks with the necessary photos and uh, details about how we're gonna clear the spillway and?
Well, I don't, yeah, sure. I, I don't, I mean, go ahead, Jamie. I'm sorry.
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wintland Agent. So, so another way of potentially resolving this is if the commission's comfortable with four feet or six feet off of the spillway, um, you know, maybe that gets reviewed now and the rest of it gets, you know. If the, if the applicant is amenable to essentially withdrawing the cattail portion and the other portions of the outstanding information um, for review at a later date, maybe we get that part moving forward. And the rest that comes for review and, you know, I can have a conversation with the applicant about more of what the information the commission will be expecting is prior to another submission of an application. Um, but that way we're not necessarily talking about it three meetings in a row unless there's specifically still information the commission wants. So one thought is if you're comfortable with any sort of distance off of the inlet for vegetation management. And then I think the other item is the, the dead trees that were identified. And if you are okay with the dead trees being removed with a condition that certain number of trees get planted in place. Um, if you're okay with me approving the species and the location, that might be one way of moving forward. Or if you think it's important that you see that documented on a plan, we can continue it to the, to the next meeting.
Commissioner Baseman, Jamie, can you tell the um, rough percentage of invasive versus natives i- at the spillway area?
So I did really briefly stop out at the site today while I was going out to another site. Um, I did not do a large assess. I didn't really look at the vegetation, to be honest. And I don't, I didn't really, I didn't have this with me, so I didn't re- I didn't recall where exactly this. The inlet was. Um, I did pay attention to the vegetation over in this area cuz I was trying to look at the um, cattails. There is a lot of poison ivy. Um. There is definitely some sumac, I believe, a low growing. Um. There's a lot of grape that's growing on top of everything. Um. I do think there's certainly a lot of overgrowth in the area, things that are growing on top of other things. Um.
Yeah, if you look at eight and nine on the photos, it, it shows the unbelievable amount of uh, barberry and um, the other little burr and the wild grape.
Again, I don't think we have those photos. Um, I don't know if you wanna try and email them to me again?
Oh, you don't have nine?
I'll double check the email, but I, it goes from seven to eleven.
Okay, well, there you can see, that's si- that's similar. That's the same area. That's to the, just in, the spillway is to the right of the eleven. And twelve is even, shows more of it.
This is Commissioner, how, how, um, how accessible in terms of distance is the inlet um, from like a, a, a regular place where you can stand and then you're not in all of this overgrowth? So in other words.
Not accessible at all, man.
Sorry?
It's not accessible at all. That.
No, so from, so, so let me, let me try to clarify. So you're, you're in a grassy area or wherever your car is parked. How far is it from where you are to the inlet?
Can you bring up the site plan? Um, the inlet is right by the red circle, the top red circle by the blue arrow.
And so how do you, how do you access, like where are you coming from? Because so what?
You can walk in on either corner.
Sorry?
You can walk in on either corner, or if you were gonna bring in a piece of equipment, there is a path on either corner of, well, either point of the triangle, I guess, to access that area. There's also a huge culvert that does cut through the center of this, so that would limit future tree planting somewhat.
Okay, this is Commissioner Boda because Jamie had said, you know, she, she had mentioned um, a few minutes ago. You know, kind of starting with a, a distance and what I'm trying to visualize is, is when you, Jamie, when you said four feet or six feet, are you talking about like a, a four or six-foot perimeter around the inlet? Are you talking about a four-foot wide path that goes from the point of entry to the inlet? Um, is it four feet? Do you, do you understand what I'm trying to get at? Like I'm, I'm trying to, and maybe Jamie, you can help with this question.
The depth of the vegetation that's to be removed, I think is what you're saying. Like from the lawn to the pond.
Yeah, it's about six to eight feet, but I think we would wanna go um, from the center line of, let's say, the inlet, three to four feet in each direction or six feet in each direction. So that would be perpendicular to the inlet and then it would go from the, basically the base of the inlet where it dumps into the pond backwards to the grassy area. So there would be a eight to twelve-foot wide um, path. And then we could let selectively let what we want grow back towards the edges and keep the middle somewhat clear.
And then, um, you said it's, it's a eight to tw- you're envisioning an eight to twelve-foot wide path. How long is the path?
I would say it's physically eight feet long.
Okay.
Probably less, but.
Yeah, the estimate is good. That's helpful. Um, again, this is Commissioner Boda. I, I think that it, it is our practice, um, and it's in our regs that, you know, the stormwater management, things like inlet um, work and on um, stormwater conveyance and things like inlets. That is certainly something that um, would be important. Um, and within um, the, the goal of our work. And so I, I would certainly be, like Jamie said, amenable to um, getting that inlet accessible. Um, and so what you've described is an eight, eight to twelve-foot wide path, which is approximately eight feet long to get to the inlet. And then the inlet clearing. Um, and then we also discussed um, dropping those couple of dead trees in place and then replacing them. Jamie had mentioned replacing them. Um, she can look at, you know, what, what you're considering and um, do an agent approval um, if, on, on the, the, the given trees themselves. And that those are two things that I, I think um, I, I would be amenable to. Um. Especially under Jamie's kind of oversight so that we could get that. And then the, the remaining portion um, could, could come back to us. But again, I'm just one, one person.
Uh, Jamie Frederick in the Wintland Agent, one point of clarification with the eight to twelve feet wide off of the inlet. Accommodate the con- also gaining access to that concrete platform that you were talking about?
On that side, it would probably be, so it would be, let's say we went six to eight feet on one side and then it would probably be twelve to sixteen on the other to uh, cover that concrete platform to the north. Right? North? I think it's north.
The side?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, you, uh, you, you lost me a little bit. Um, so we've got the inlet and then there.
So.
The platform.
Six feet or so on one side and then it would be up to sixteen feet wide on the other side to get to that concrete wall and inspect that as well.
This is Commissioner Baseman. Why are we extending to the wall at this time?
I was, Jamie Frederick in the Wintland Agent, I was wondering if it would encompass that area or not, or if that would be another issue for a later date.
If, if, is it, is that part of the stormwater conveyance or that platform is something to do with not stormwater conveyance?
I don't think it has anything to do with stormwater conveyance, to be honest. Uh, it would be more of a aesthetic and with, then we could at least get a bench in place, which the Pine Orchard Association has been asking for for years.
Sure.
And accommodate them somewhat.
So what isn't, that, why doesn't that come in as a, as a second piece? And, and we'll focus on that, that first step of just getting the, the, the inlet opened up?
That's fine.
What other commissioners? I'm not speaking for anybody else, but that's where my head is.
Seems that, this is Commissioner Baseman, seems like that's a good way to get the additional information we're gonna need for the larger picture considering, you know, some of the long-term issues uh, that that plan uh, probably presents as opposed to uh, making sure that we have a functioning spillway in the near term. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
And then procedurally, we would, so procedurally, we'd have this and then the rest of the brush and tree removal uh, at the next meeting with more information. And then the um, cattails, I would withdraw that portion of the application and then we would resubmit that um, when we have more information and possibly a consultant onboard.
Yes.
Sounds correct.
That sounds like.
Or does that portion of the application just get tabled and then it just sits, which is easier, which is the best way to approach it? I apologize.
So I think there's two options logistically. One is, so, so, so just to take a quick step back. So if you keep the application on the table and the commission's not making a decision on the application, but greenlighting the clearing of eight to twelve feet wide, eight foot long as like an as-of-right activity, we could do that. Um, alternatively, if the commission's making a decision to issue a permit for that activity, that you, you, we can't split it up into two permits. So either a permit would have to be issued or you'd have to determine it's as-of-right. Um, if you're issuing a permit, then I think you would have to request that the applicant pull out the things that you're currently not ready to approve so that it can be an application you can act on. And then the applicant would resubmit for those other items once the additional information can be obtained.
Okay. And then just a question logistically. So if you're pulling out a grapevine and the grapevine continues into the non-approved area, you just cut it to that one? Or are you allowed to pull it the rest of the way out?
I'm not gonna know where every single grapevine out there was or wasn't.
Well, I'll, I'll go down and stake it, whatever you prove for a limit. And then if anybody wants to come by before the next meeting, I'm not gonna get it done in the next two weeks anyway. So I'll stake whatever the approved limit is and then anyone can come down and, and take a look through it at any time if they'd like. We welcome all in Pine Orchard.
So, so. You're, you're saying you won't have the vegetation removed before the next meeting?
Uh, hold on. Oh, I, i- if you, well, I don't know how quickly you can act. So if, if I had approval to do it for this weekend, I could do that. I do have time on uh, Sunday, but uh, then I would, my time dries up until the fourth.
Jamie Frederick in the Wintland Agent. The reason why I ask is cuz then maybe, maybe again, like I said, the commission can't split the application into two pieces. Uh, you either table the application or approve parts of it and the other parts be withdrawn. Um, so we, the commission said the activities of removing invasive were as-of-right last time, so that's how that got approved. Um. So long and short of it, I guess, is would it make more sense for maybe me to meet with Jeff out onsite? Get some photos, some better knowledge of what's out there for the commission to do a bit more of a holistic review of the. holistic review of the vegetation removal outside of the water course at the next meeting? Or do you want to just move forward with the eight to twelve feet wide vegetation removal at the inlet and withdraw the rest and table it for consideration at a later time?
This is Commissioner Bassman. I like the latter.
Commissioner Begman, I agree.
Jeff, does that a, does that address your immediate concerns?
We're gonna table the portions of the application that are whatever on apple hole right now and we're gonna have conditional approval to remove the spillway um foliage uh and then come back in two weeks, which is on a
So e- essentially, if the commission were to act on part of the application, the rest of the application would become null and void and a new application would have to be submitted. So it wouldn't necessarily be in two weeks unless you were to submit a new application in that timeframe. But there might be more information needed before you're ready to submit. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um.
Yes, let's move forward on the spillway stuff and then we can work on the other stuff. I mean, it wasn't how the whole thing started, but um I appreciate that and maybe um that'll be um a way for y'all to judge me as uh as having goodwill and good intentions.
And we can meet out there and kind of take a look at some of the other things and kind of discuss.
Maybe I can get some information on the uh the other foliage and buffers and the cattail type and everything else, although I think it's just a, I think it's called a great long cocktail, so it's not considered that invasive, it's just considered very aggressive.
Well, this is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, given the fact that this was an application, do we need a vote to isolate the spillway portion?
E- yeah, so I think the appropriate way to move forward would be to approve the clearing off of the spillway, eight to twelve feet wide, centered off the the inlet. And that any additional vegetation in the upland or wetland area vegetation removal on the upland or what in the upland area and any removal of the cattails would require additional information under a new permit application.
So are the dead trees included in the portion?
Does the commission feel ready to address the dead trees now or would you rather, or do you need additional information on what's involved in those that removal? Like I said, if if you were to approve the removal of the trees, I would suggest requiring something to be planted to replace it.
Yeah, why why don't we concentrate just on the spillway? Because location, type of species and all that kind of stuff would have to be considered if we're going to be planting stuff. Um, and it sounds like if time is important here, the spillway seems to be at the top of the list.
And I will just comment that the commission, you know, should there be a storm and one of the trees gets damaged and it's a hazard, we're not gonna say you have to wait until you get approval from us. That hazard could be addressed. So um, we're not looking to maintain hazards or anything like that, but I don't think any of the trees are at that point right now. Granted, I'm not an arborist.
You're an optimist. All right, thank you very much for your time. So I, Mr. Chairman, I think you were asking if you need to have a vote.
Correct.
So this is Commissioner Boda. I will make a motion um to for um application B R I W number twenty five point oh eight point oh one, twenty five Blackstone Ave. That we approve the section of the permit application um to clear vegetation of the inlet um as as well as a um eight to twelve foot wide path centered off the inlet um to gain access. Um, and with the condition that the remaining portions of the application um be withdrawn and resubmitted at a later time.
I'd second that. Commissioner Bassman. Any further discussion? Commissioner Begman.
Commissioner Begman, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Commissioner Sotomayor, aye.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye.
All right.
We have uh.
Your tolerance.
Thank you, Mr. Host. We do appreciate your work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next up, uh twenty five oh eight oh three, you indicated, I think, Jamie, this was withdrawn?
Yes, did receive confirmation is withdrawn.
And I thought in your introductory comment, you also said C?
I W twenty five oh eight oh four thirty nine Prospect Hill Road, Residential Edition, New Septic. There's been a request to continue the matter to the October ninth, twenty twenty five meeting, which I am in support of.
We have enforcement, season correct, twenty five oh nine oh one fifteen Pinewood Road. Clearing an encroachment into the wetland area. This is a continuation of the show cause hearing. Um, we looking for additional information on this one?
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, I did meet with the property owner yesterday um to touch base on where they are in the process. Um. They are working on on getting um a time for the soil scientist to come back out and develop a planting plan. Um, they're also corresponding with various departments and agencies to determine what approvals are going to be required and what level of cyclone will be required. Um, and I I think they're gonna need some additional time. So I'm recommending that we continue the show cause hearing to October twenty third. If they're ready beforehand, they can contact me and we can try and get it on the October ninth meeting. Um, but I, they are, I do, they are working on a resolution and I I don't think it's worth our time to take up before then unless they have the information needed to review.
Okay, anybody have an issue with that? Season correct, twenty two oh five oh two thirty five Bayberry Lane Vegetation Remover Removal. Uh, you want to lift this order?
Yeah, Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent. Um, so we got three very on time reports for this, which makes me happy because unfortunately, that's not always the case. Um, and they were all sup- they're all um supportive uh of no invasives and the last one, so they didn't think further um monitoring was required. The order said three years minimum. Um, I think it's appropriate to lift the order because they they have um, I would say a thriving wetland area and I didn't see any invasives when I went out there and the soil scientist didn't identify any in his report. Um, I think I put all the reports in the Dropbox. They have photos of the wetland area. Um, and you can see in the third report that it's really kind of come in nicely. Um, and when I was out there today, um, the cattails were, you know, um for for those of you that aren't aren't aware in that of that last photo where photo two, it is cattails, not a ragmides that you're seeing there. Um, so if everyone, if the commission agrees, we would need a motion to lift the order. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try and address them.
And? With that introduction, nobody wants to not lift this order? I make a motion that we lift the order as suggested by staff.
This is Commissioner Gokowski, I second that.
I I can't believe there's any further discussion, so Commissioner Begman.
Commissioner Begman, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski.
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Sotomayor, aye.
Oh, wonderful. Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. All right. No applic- no application for receipt. We have other business seventy one Midwood Road. Uh, this has been tabled um until the next meeting. No agent approvals. Jamie, you had indicated the Kakiwick Annual Meeting. Was there any comment that you wanted to uh inform the commission regarding that?
Sure. So um if anyone wants to register for the event, please let us know. I believe the deadline for early registration is, of course, I didn't write it down. Um, it's mid-October, so if you can try and let us know, we'll probably do a last call on some point early in October via email. But let us know when we can register you. We would need to know um any of the information, what sessions you want to be registered for and I don't, I think there's something about if you have any dietary special needs or anything like that. Um, it is a Saturday event, uh but it is, it is a good one. Um, so.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Question, do do the commissioners get a copy of the habitat sent to them directly or or not, Jamie?
Uh. No, I don't, I I don't know anyone that receives a copy of the habitat directly. Um, it would be nice.
The the question is, it sits, it's electronic, you know, it's not a printed copy anymore. Um, is that something that commissioners would like? I don't want to, you know, put something in your inbox if it's just gonna get deleted.
They do post the habitat to their website. Uh, it's usually quarterly, so you could also check. I usually try to check and um I may or may not know the vice president of Kakiwick and they may or may not tell me when there's a new habitat and then I blast it out to everybody, so.
If if anybody announces it directly, um let Jamie know and we'll get it on a list. Anything else? Any other comments from the commission this evening?
Y'all can just wish my students luck tomorrow. They are testing on the nitrogen cycle, so tonight's discussion was quite timely.
Nice.
Would have been, yeah, would have been interesting if anyone tuned in tonight. All right.
Jamie Frederick in the Wetland Agent, wait, I got one quick quick announcement. I just wanted to let the commission know, we have hired a um zoning wetland enforcement officer and we have posted the position for the in the wetland associate. Um, and I will be in touch, you know, as we proceed with, you know, any any changes as we move forward, but for the time being, you will still very much see my face a lot and I will always be a resource for you know, all things in the wetlands and watercourses related.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, are we still on for early October for this uh cut to the new system?
Yes, but I mean, it's not gonna be like a hard cut, you know, like there's nothing that I think, especially from from your vantage point, that will you know, effectively change October first. Um, I, you will be introduced to new faces as things develop, but um I will still be your go to person.
All righty. Good night, folks. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.